Okay, it's seven o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole to order. Clerk, will you please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting from January 17th. Is there?
I move approval of the minutes from January 17th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Approved by James, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantial corrections? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, next item is presentations and public input. We'll have Barry Dunn give a presentation first. Good evening, Michelle.
We live? We're good? All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you a little bit this evening. I'd like to say we planned this to coincide with our first visit here. It just kind of happened by accident, but it's a nice happy accident that we have a chance to spend a few minutes to visit with you a little bit about the work we're doing. What I was thinking was just give you a little bit of a background of kind of the project and what we're going, and then happy to take questions if that works for you. Great. So, as all of you know, but just for the public's knowledge...
I'm sorry, would you pull the mic a little closer to you? Yeah.
Is that better?
Perfect.
There we go. Just for the public's knowledge, my name is Michelle Weinzele. I am a manager with Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn is a national consulting firm. We've been contracted by the city to do a project, actually a fairly substantive project that covers, you know, some pretty significant categories. And I have, we have been working on this already for about a month and a half. Have been out here already previously. Right now, I am out here with three of my team members who are in the back of the audience here, Tom Shea, Melissa Van Landingham, and Mitch Snyder, all of whom are part of the team that we have here this week doing specific interviews with members of Police and Fire Department staff. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But the project itself is really, the purpose of this project is to look at your public safety services being provided throughout the community, particularly by the Police and Fire Departments, and to consider ways in which we might reimagine some of those services, and also to look at staffing models that are in use by both of those two departments. The project itself is going to occur in some distinct phases. The first phase of that is really looking at staffing for the Police Department and the Fire Department, and that's the piece of the project we're involved in right now. That, we expect that work to take around six months from the beginning of this project. In the midst of that, we're doing a lot of different things, and really the next leg of the project work will involve looking at different models of service delivery, ways that you might consider kind of reimagining the traditional service delivery models for not only police service, but also with fire and/or through other entities within the city that might have a public safety nexus. And so we will be looking at all of those pieces. That's kind of in the midpoint of this project. And the last part of the project is to really kind of combine all the information that we get from the first two sections, coalesce that into a plan, into a series of recommendations, and an architecture of sorts for you to look at and consider and/or follow as you move forward with the process. The project is, right now, it's scheduled to be about 18 months. We'll see how things go. We may or may not be able to speed some of that up along the way, but as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts to this and a lot of, a lot of pieces to the puzzle that we need to pull in. I will mention that, just right out of the gate, appreciate the willingness of city staff to assist us. I have perhaps inundated them with data requests and information requests, all of which really are a part of our standard processes to look at, examine, and consider the various questions that are in front of us. There will be a number of different processes that we use to get at the answers to the questions that are in front of us. We do a large number of interviews of staff and key stakeholders. We will also do small group meetings, mid-sized group meetings, and larger group meetings throughout the course of the project. We have a number of surveys and other diagnostic tools that we've developed that we will be disseminating to various groups and departments for them to complete. And also, there will be significant quantitative and qualitative analysis of a variety of different outputs from those various instruments and the data that we've requested. There will be, in the next, hopefully within the next week or so, we will be standing up a website specific to this project, which will be a public-facing website, uses a tool called Social Pinpoint. And on that website, we will have opportunities for information, say, talking about when the community can get involved, when we might be holding open community meetings. I know that the mayor's going to prepare a message, an introduction message, that will go up on that website as well. We will also post on that website information about the project, the scope of the project, and at various junctures as we continue to develop reports and artifacts that we produce will be posted there for the public to review. So this really is intended to be a one-stop shop, and there will be links to that website through the city and through the various media outlets that the city has available to it. As a part of that process, we will be doing, as I mentioned, a number of different meetings, but once we have put up that website, we'll be zeroing in on some specific dates for the community to participate in community meetings, both in-person meetings and also online. There will also be surveys that will be posted through the Social Pinpoint site, and then also kind of a broader community safety survey that we're going to work with the community, with the city staff to develop and then disseminate for broad distribution across your community, with hopes that we can really reach effectively everybody within the community with that information. So, again, the idea here is to start out with an understanding of your existing conditions. That's kind of the phase we're in right now, talking to the, specifically to the Police and Fire Departments, trying to get as much of an understanding of the background on those departments as we can. We will continue that kind of exploratory piece, and then we are going to look at additional, as I said, various models that could be used, and alternative models, and then ultimately provide you with a report that outlines the various alternative options that are available to you. So, with that, I'm going to hit the pause button and just, I'm happy to take questions or provide more information.
And I should have done this prior to you speaking, but to give a little background of the community safety review that we're doing in the city of Urbana, on June 18th, 2021, the city of Urbana passed the annual budget with an allocation of funds to support any evaluation of the city's public safety needs through the lens of racial equity and social justice. So that is how we got involved in, with Barry Dunn. Myself and Councilmember Colacetti have been at the table of this process since the beginning, and so we're very much looking forward to what Barry Dunn has to offer. Especially during your presentation, you talked about, and this is from your packet and it stuck with me, fundamentally shift the relationship between the police and community by converting police agencies from independent organizations to those that are jointly operated and community-owned resource. So that is what we're looking to do in Urbana. And so I appreciate you and your team coming out this week and getting the ball rolling. And like you said, it is going to be a long process, but we've already waited some time to get this started, so, you know, another year or so won't be very long. And we'll go ahead with council questions. James, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us an orientation to what you're here to do and your team. I wanted to ask, are you familiar with the existence of our Citizens Police Review Board as part of the context of what our current model looks like?
I am familiar with the fact that you have one.
Okay.
We will be, that will be a, one of the focal points of the process will be to evaluate the model and to look at its structure and kind of its value in the process, if you will, and/or any suggestions or, you know, variations or recommendations we might have.
Okay, because it's been a clear point, both from council and from the public, that it needs review, we need to look at it, particularly the ordinance that created it needs to be worked on, and I just wanted to make sure that's in the scope of what you'll be looking at.
Absolutely.
And the other aspects of that is, you know, it was created a while ago, and things have evolved, our community has evolved, the size of our community plays into this. All of those would be part of the factors that you would look at?
Yes, and what I would just say is that the evolution of the landscape is the most, kind of the broader landscape, and I will just tell you that part of the language that Ms. Bishop was talking about is part of our police reform model that we've developed, which really is an expansion of a lot of the work we've been doing for a while, but it's really an outcropping of a need for the policing industry in particular to reconsider some of its models and look at different ways of connecting to communities. And a number of those things funnel into the notion of collaborative policing models, particularly with respect to connecting communities and police agencies in a positive way that builds trust.
All right, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks so much, Michelle, for the presentation and for taking on this task. I had a few questions. You've already addressed the one, but if I could just reiterate to confirm, you mentioned that there'll be several opportunities for community input, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you. And then next, I was wondering about other options. You mentioned, you know, evaluating police and fire department staffing things. I was wondering if you were considering other options potentially of co-responder, non-police, or maybe full non-police task force, or even technological things? That company Trulio keeps sending me a lot of things about technological surveillance in a sense, or monitoring, and then also our city policies and boards, I think that was mentioned. So I know that was a few things there, but I was wondering if those were some of the types of options that would also be explored?
So, the short answer to your question is that when we think about alternative response, that's very broad, and it opens up many, many doors. So, the process that we use will engage a number of different folks to weigh in on potential alternatives to responding to any wide range of different types of public safety services that are provided, and part of that will involve asking those who respond to give us prompts as to where we might look for that. So, there's, it would be very, very difficult for us to ascertain what all the potential services are available within your community. Quite frankly, people within your community and within your individual workforces are the best source for that information. But the short answer to your question is, we will consider a broad range of options available, various response models, and for what it's worth, we've been doing a fair amount of this. This is kind of an emerging lane within the public safety space in the last couple of years, where more and more focus has been brought to the question of, should we re-envision how we deliver public safety services, particularly those from police and fire? And at any rate, we have a very robust methodology for doing that, and we will, it will be a very broad approach.
Thank you. And will there be an update along the way for council and the public? Kind of like a draft page, phase, or of another check-in point before the final recommendations?
Yes, there will be, there's a series of scheduled deliverable documents along the way. We will work with city staff in terms of the production of those, and when those become public, what I would say is that, generally speaking, these types of projects ultimately become public when they're concluded. There's a reason why we sometimes hold our cards close at certain phases during things, because oftentimes, as we, the further we go down the process, we realize that there may be other pieces or parts to the final, final recommendations. But having said all that, we will certainly continue to be in contact with your project management team, your city administrator, and will provide appropriate updates to this body along the way as requested.
Thank you. And then I was wondering if it's going to include recommendations on how to implement this, or if that's kind of beyond the scope of this review?
So, generally speaking, our recommendations, and part of our process is to help develop an implementation plan for you at the end of this. So, when we talk about the whole duration of this, you know, the first 12 to 15 months of this is really all about building, building into where we want to go, and then the last few months is going to be helping you understand and develop a plan, an actionable plan to go forward. We generally try to be, in our recommendations, we generally try to be descriptive as opposed to being prescriptive. So, many times, many times, if we're too specific about you should do X, that can create challenges, especially if for some reason X can't be done, and the next thing is tied to having done X. So, much of what we will do in the recommendations will be descriptive, to say this is a path that you should go, here are some thoughts and considerations of that, and then ultimately we'll work with your project management team to develop the types of plans that you need to help advance those recommendations and take them to that next level.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers Wu and Colacetti on the phone, did you have anything to add or ask?
Yeah, I would. Sorry for not being there. This is Jaya Colacetti. Michelle, thank you for joining us. I apologize for not being there tonight. I'm homesick with COVID, unfortunately. So I just wanted to add to what Chandra's already shared, that this is a process that, as the folks who drafted that original language for the budget amendment, Chandra and I have been part of the process of reviewing applications and potential candidates for this project. And one of the things that really stood out to me in terms of Barry Dunn and Michelle and her team is the degree to which they're willing to look at the full range of what public safety means, and then also thinking about tools and strategies that work for our city in particular, right? We know that there are models that are out there that might be beyond the means of the city of Urbana, and so thinking about what might actually work for our city while also having a robust community engagement process for things that really were important, I think, for all of us who were part of selecting this team. And so, just to kind of reinforce, we do have multiple points where community members will have a say in terms of shaping this project, and there will be ongoing communication with council that has the potential for meaningful change in terms of how we envision public safety in Urbana. So I'm grateful for this opportunity to have Michelle here to speak to folks tonight.
Thank you.
Mary Alice, did you have anything?
No, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for the information. I look forward to seeing the process through and to seeing some of the final recommendations.
Thank you.
Sharice?
I guess the main question I have is, can you give me a description or a definition of some kind of what you consider public safety? What does that entail? And I just, I'm asking that not just for my own benefit, but for the benefit of the public, so that they understand exactly what this means.
So I think that's a, that's a very interesting question. I think when most of us think of public safety, we're immediately drawn to three categories. That's police, fire, and EMS. Those tend to be the, really, the mainstays or the staples of our public safety spectrum. But when we talk about community safety, we, there's some other categories that fall into that. One of them is mental health and medical services. And while your city generally doesn't provide medical services, you are oftentimes a facilitator for folks who come into that medical service category. Another one that falls within that public safety spectrum are the unhoused population. It's not uncommon for communities to wrestle with issues related to the unhoused population and how that impacts various quality of life issues throughout your community. And so, when we think of public safety from a narrow perspective, we tend to think of it as really being police-fire EMS, but when we think about it really from a community-wide perspective, there are some other tentacles that bleed into that, and a lot of overlaps. You have various departments within your community that provides services that arguably work toward your overall community safety and health and safety of your, of the community members. So, although, although the initial focus on the staffing pieces relates to police and fire in particular, we will be looking, again, more broadly across your service system to look for other opportunities where there might be public safety services that may be offered by other departments outside of your city, or outside of the Police Department and Fire Department, and there may even be public safety services that are provided by third parties that may funnel into that as well. So, we are already in the process of collecting some of that data and information from city staff, and we'll continue to build that as we go.
So you're looking at a broad, kind of from a broader perspective, and I didn't think it would just be police-fire and EMS, but you're also looking at services regarding mental health, regarding the unhoused population, as you put it, that's nice, medical services and how the hospitals interact with those?
So, you know, again, what we're looking at is, what does your system look like? And how do these, how do these pieces fit together? How do, in what ways are people in need available, able to get the kinds of services that they require? And to what extent do we need to consider different processes to provide those services in a wide spectrum? I mean, I want to be clear, we're not, we're not studying the hospital, and we're not studying clinics, but we are going to study the process of the types of services that folks within the community may need, particularly as they enter the system. Your fire department currently is a quasi-EMS provider, right? They provide EMS services but not transports, and so there is a measure of EMS services that are provided through them. That also means that they're getting sent to those types of crisis incidents that we might consider to be mental health-related or crisis intervention-related, just like the Police Department is also similarly likely being sent to those things as well. And when we think about alternative response, probably the most, the largest segment of that tends to be in the mental health space. And to what extent have we considered or contemplated or looked at other ways to deliver mental health services to help people get into those systems? So, we will look at that, at the breadth of the different services that are available, and then look at the viability of whether those, whether engaging those options, expanding those options, doing something different is going to be worthwhile and manageable for you as a community.
Thank you.
Michelle, could you talk just ever so briefly about maybe a past city you've worked with that, you know, sort of went through the same process and what the outcome and success of that was?
Did you just ask me to be ever so briefly? Because you don't know me. Let me, let me just say that, I'll give you, I'll give you two examples. One is, many of you may have heard of Kahoots. Kahoots is arguably the most well-known national model. It actually is a model that is used within the city of Eugene, Oregon. We have been on a multi-month project, working with them, very much doing the same thing that we're doing here. They are obviously a larger community with a very robust response system, but Kahoots is a crisis response team. For those who are unfamiliar with that, the way Kahoots is designed is it, they have a mental health practitioner and an EMT-level medically-trained person, a two-person team that goes out on crisis intervention requests. They are, they are able to respond independently, but they are also regularly brought in by the Police Department, or the Fire Department, or several other sections of city departments who do different work. And many times Kahoots is interacting with the unhoused population, particularly, if you don't know, Eugene has the highest per capita unhoused population in the country. They are, there are a lot of service overlaps between the various departments, and we have spent a fair amount of time trying to untangle that system and help them understand it. So Kahoots is one model. They, the city of Eugene currently contracts for 36 hours of services per day of response time, and their cost is around $1 million to pay for those services annually. We also recently completed a project for the city of Oak Park, Illinois, just a suburb of Chicago, just up the road, not too far from here, and we did a similar look at Oak Park. Oak Park has a, has had a longstanding model of co-response with another, with a mental health, safety service organization, so, but in contrast, that unit never responds independently. It is solely a co-response with the police service. And the dichotomy there is that some of these variations are tied to the volume of service demand, the cost of providing those services, the return on investment, and so each community, and this goes back to looking at your community very specifically and looking at what's going to be a good model here, each community is very unique in its, in its needs, and so we will look at and help guide you all to the different options and possibilities that are available to you, and then help you understand what does that look like in practice, and what does that look like from a cost perspective, what does that look like from an efficiency or an effectiveness, and again, a viability perspective? So, that's just two of the communities that we've, they're really kind of on different ends of the spectrum, if you will, but really both with a strong desire to reconsider how to advance alternative responses to various public safety services.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Michelle? Okay, well? Diane, did you have something? Oh. Well, we appreciate you coming here tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Look forward to keeping you updated along the way, and thanks very much for a chance to visit with you, and you all know where to find me, so if you have... So if you have any questions, feel free to funnel those through. And again, I look forward to visiting with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have a public input. If you would approach the microphone, state your name, and you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Otten from the Myra G area. Lived in Urbana a long time. And I'm here to talk about the police contract, the FOP contract. We have a very unique, rare opportunity. If the council were to reject this police contract that is being dictated to you by the FOP, we could start a countywide conversation as to whether officers who engage in deliberate, intentional, unjustified use of excess force or engage in falsifying evidence can be fired by the police chief, which I understand this contract does not allow. Also, in this contract, the CRPB has no teeth. We need to remember back when Champagne faced the officer Matt Rush, who had four counts against him, mostly against aggressive acts against African-Americans. And he was guilty of all of them. And the police chief tried to fire him, and he did fire him. And then he had to be rehired to the tune of four different lawsuits, more than $350,000. And in the end, we had to pay him $50,000 to allow us to fire him, to allow Champagne to fire him. And we're setting ourselves up by following the FOP's model of contract to do that same thing again. And the irony is not lost on me that we're talking about, you know, paying a consultant to do this great reimagining. But we can't even reimagine any kind of out-of-the-box contract with regard to the FOP dictating the way they do, what needs to be in each contract, and holding it over our heads as municipalities that, oh, we're going to win every arbitration anyway, so you just have to do what we say from the beginning. It's just not right. Police departments need to have vigorous, independent, public oversight. And that will not have any effect on the good cops. And you constantly hear this, there are a few bad cops. Well, if you can't get rid of the bad cops, you know, you just have to keep them in the basket, then you undermine all of our belief in the police system. And it's not my belief necessarily, but the youth who, and the African-Americans, the minorities who are heavily policed. We're trying to stop this terrible problem of our youth killing each other, and we have to do it by having them be able to trust the police. And it's, if they, there is no reason to trust the police if there's no oversight of the police. We can't just assume that everybody's going to do the right thing on the police force, because power tends to corrupt. And police have a lot of power. And they certainly have all the power when it comes to them versus young citizens of our community. I bet you the FOP was thrilled when the "defund the police" movement got named, instead of being named "Hold the Police Accountable Movement", "Fund What Needs to Be Funded" movement. Because people really don't want to defund the police. We don't want to not have police, but we want to have good relationship with the police, where it's transparent. And I just don't see how that can happen if you sign this contract. And I also can't believe we're going to, we're talking about reimagining this, and then we're going to lock ourselves into this contract with the FOP once again. It need, Deb Finan, back when she was dealing with the Matt Rush thing, said, "We're going to do this because this is what we have to do to make this go away. We're going to sign this contract again, but, and we're going to pay this guy this $50,000, but we're going to talk to the state lawmakers so we can figure out what to do so that we don't have to, so that the arbitration process can be changed." And that's what needs to happen. We need to have conversations between the municipalities with somebody who can reimagine something, but please don't just sign the same thing. There's the organization that Chris Evans brought to you, LEAP, the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, who has worked with municipalities to get the language changed in contracts. And yet none of that language made it into this contract. Go back to the drawing board. Go back to the drawing board. And also, please wait until Chris is here. He's in the hospital right now, and he can't be here for the meeting tonight. He's hospitalized. But please wait to vote on this until he is here. You know how he would vote. And it would be a very big disservice if you voted for this tonight without him being here. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Alan Max Saxwad, resident of Urbana. Been a lot happening in the background. And so first, I want to remind you all of some things that you were talking about the last time the bargaining process happened. You weren't quite happy with how the bargaining worked when you had to ratify a delayed contract. I had talked to you about perhaps considering an ordinance to dictate the composition of the city's bargaining team, which could include alderpersons. It could include some degree of community representatives after having completed some trainings to make sure they don't cause a bunch of legal problems for the city. But that would, I think, change things for the better. There's been some narratives out there from folks who haven't been in a union about this process. So I did want to say to, you know, the benefit of doubts or in a good faith manner, that it's very normal for unions to be relatively silent about what is in their contract. It's part of the ILRB, NRLRB certification process to make sure that they didn't unduly lobby their members to vote a particular way. It's an anti-corruption measure. And usually, unions get loud about it when they're upset. The FOP has not been loud about it, so they're not upset. That's just some context here for folks that are wondering. That being said, the CPRB is something that I hope you all have done well on. I don't know what the contract's going to be, in part because of how I believe this process works. But just as a reminder from discussion a few months ago, and you probably all know, CPRB is, I think, the only one that prohibits folks on the basis of a felony from participating. And they review just the appeals of complaints. So hopefully, some progress has been made on that. But I'm also a voting member of the CESA Region Six Committee. I might have gotten it wrong. Can't tell if it's committee or commission. I always get it wrong. So we are the government body that is tasked with talking with units of government to make sure, among other things, that the spirit of the law is upheld in a way that is functional. And so one of the things that I would like to point out as community members are no doubt talking to you all about delaying the bargaining process, there's yet another reason why you want to. And it's because when CESA is scheduled to go into effect, it's now July, you will be in impact bargaining. That is when state law changes dictate that you have to, again, meet the union at the table. And so any process or momentum you have, you have to start from square one. So that's just a logistical concern there. Regarding the arbitration process, it's a state law. We have lawmakers that you all have some degree of familiarity with, if not a good working relationship with. Ask them if, even if they don't want to be the author, if they would sponsor it. See if that much can happen to change the arbitration process in a way where the city can actually push a bit more firmly on these core demands. That was something that I had brought up to you last time during bargaining as well. So I hope that you all have put in the good fight. And I hope that the measures are decent, because I will be advocating in the Champagne-Urbana Democratic Socialists of America Labor Working Group to track the differences between those contracts. And we will keep that in mind the next time there's a municipal election. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the committee of the whole?
Hi, my name is Derek Breyers. I'm a resident of Urbana Ward Four. I'm also here to talk about the police contract. And once again, urge you to not approve this. I don't, I mean, I think you've heard, I don't know how many countless people give public comments, send in emails about how they do not support this. And it's clear that, I mean, the entire process from the beginning to end is just asinine, right? That you would allow the FOP to bully you into a single-day bargaining session. Absurd, unheard of, and ridiculous. And to even get into a bargaining process, and then the only things in the contract you change is you give the cops almost $1 million in raises over three years, and then a, a really sarcastic injustice, Juneteenth off as a paid holiday. That's it. What's the point? What did you do? What did the city of Urbana do here other than just say, oh, yes, please take whatever you would like? What did, what was your role in this process? What, did you think about the people at all? Did you think about police violence? Did you think about racial parole violence? Did you think about jail overcrowding? Did you think about massive protests in your streets in this city against the police in favor of police accountability? If you did, it is not obvious. It is not apparent at all. It is not apparent that you care in the least about the people of Urbana, particularly not the poor and working class, and especially black folks that are overpoliced and railroaded into this overcrowded jail on Learman Road, which you also approved a special license to, to improve and $5 million of ARPA funds for. Why not give that to prevention and education measures? But no, you'll give $1 million to the cops after giving them 1.34 million in raises. I'm sorry, not raises, bonuses. You're giving them $1 million in raises. 134 million in bonuses. You know what cops start out here? $68,000. That's nothing. That's no education of any kind. $68,000. You know what the US Census Bureau puts the median household income in Urbana? $37,000. Any of us can go to your website and see how many of these cops make over $100 grand a year. It's a lot. It's a lot of them. They do not live in the same reality that the people of this city live in. They probably don't even live in this city, since you've also eased the residency requirements. This is unjust. This is undemocratic, and this is absurd. This cannot go through. It just absolutely cannot. There's time. You've got plenty of time. The contract doesn't expire until the end of June. The cops on their website tout how collaborative they are with the community, but they're not. They didn't get any public input for this. They're not out here justifying why they get more money when they already make two or three times what the rest of us make in this city. They're not collaborative. They're bullies, and they're hiding behind the FOP and the rest of you sitting here to get whatever the hell they want at whatever price they claim. I don't know how many times I've been here. Not a single cop has ever showed up to say anything. And have you gotten any public comment? There are people like, oh, hell, yeah. Let's, let's approve this contract. Does anyone come here to tell you how much they love the cops? How much they want to give them more money? Is there any public sentiment at all that puts you in this direction? That leads you to approving this contract? To think that it's justifiable? Is there any public sentiment that says, yes, we should restrict the civilian police review board, not empower it? Has anyone ever, ever talked to you personally to say, oh, yeah, I would love to restrict that civilian police review board more? I guarantee they haven't. This was a great opportunity you had to do something, to show that you might give a damn about the people of this city. And nothing. You sat on your hands. You agreed to an absurd process, and then you let the cops give whatever they wanted. That is ridiculous. That is unjust. That is unfair. That is undemocratic. And now's your last chance. Don't approve this. Don't vote it. Don't, don't vote to approve it. Do you go to arbitration? You go to arbitration. My God, have some guts. Take a risk. It's already horrible. How much bad, how much worse can it get? Take a chance and fucking do something.
Hi, my name is Saba Manetti Tesva. You probably have seen me before. I've lived in Urbana my whole life. I am going to add to what Sandra said earlier about Officer Rush that you guys all probably remember, who had many excessive force lawsuits against him, most of which are targeting black folks. And in that situation, the chief of police, the mayor, and the head of city all tried to fire this one cop. And it was near impossible and took years and years before he was actually fired, which points to the fact that the FOP was actually taking so much power away from everybody that would have otherwise had the power to fire this cop. So the Fraternal Order of Police contract totally ties the hands of the CPRB and makes it not mandated, mandated for police officers to actually show up to the review of a complaint made about that officer, which totally exposes the lack of accountability that the FOP protects. I mean, like, they don't even have to show up to the review. The CPRB has asked to do more. They want to do more. They want to have more power. And the FOP totally blocks them from having that. So this is my issue. This is my, I'm confused about why we would sign this contract when it's like obviously taking away power from everybody other than the police and even the police chief. And this is my solution to the problem. So multiple alternative proposals have been made, one of which was written by Christopher Evans, who has not joined us tonight because he is unable to. He definitely would rather be nowhere else, I can assure you. But his proposal gives more power to the city, and specifically the chief of police, so that an officer that uses excessive force, like Officer Rush, or an officer that lies or tampers with evidence can actually be fired instead of being protected, no matter what they do, by the FOP contract. Okay, so that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Tracy from Urbana. I'm not going to stand here tonight and bring up all the flaws and problems with the police union contract. The public, myself included, have been telling you about all these problems with the FOP contract since July 2021, when you approved the first contract, when you were first appointed as city council members, some of you. You heard it again in December 2022, when many of the same people brought up all these points. And they're going to bring it up again tonight. You know the public's concerns. If you don't know by now, maybe you're sleeping during the whole meeting, but I'm pretty sure you know it. What I want to know, and I want each of you to answer for, is why do you think that it's okay to present the same contract, the same one that numerous people spoke up against in 2021 and 2022? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I did not, I don't, I think it's the same contract that you proposed in December 2022. Even the memo date is the same. You know the problems. Are we seriously going to spend time tonight again discussing the same flawed contract? Are we? Yes? Okay. You all discussed it after people brought it up in December 2022. You talked about it for a few meetings. City council members gave the same old meaningless comments. I want to learn more. I want to learn more about the process. I want to see the reason behind this and this and this. Well, no surprise, then Mayor Marlin announced a presentation. She loves presentations. City staff loves presentations. So that all of you can learn more, so that it buys time. And then you don't discuss the FOP for a few weeks. Really, there's no surprise there. This is the same tactic used by Mayor Marlin to squash public concern. She tries to calm the people down by delaying, stalling, holding some meaningless presentation, buying time, so that the council and the public all have the good feeling that they are learning more about the process. about the process. This is just the same tactic over and over again, buying time, delaying more, postponing decisions till everyone is just exhausted. Do you see many of the people who used to come here and talk back in 2020, 2021? We are all so exhausted. This group of people here, they're going to talk, but in, when you guys, by the end of this process, everyone's going to feel exhausted, and Mayor Marlin will get away. So, or maybe they'll wait till your council term is over. It's just two years more. Like the Barry Dunn survey, it's going to take 18 months. You guys will be done. So before you vote yes to forward the FOP contract to city council tonight, I want each of you to answer to the public. We brought up the problems back in 2021, back in December 2022, and you said you want to learn more. I want to hear from each of you what you have learned in the span of this time that makes you think that it's okay to present this flawed contract to the public again tonight. Why are you wasting our time? Why are you wasting my time standing here tonight? You all have been waiting to learn more for 22 months. Half of your term is nearly up, and you're still failing and falling on your decision and failing on your promises, all the election promises that you made to the public. We hear the same excuses over and over again. Enough with excuses. And what happened to having hybrid public input? Is it just forgotten? As far as I know, I heard council members' voice loud and clear during their remote participation. Why can't the public do the same? This is still Mayor Marlin's tactic. Postpone, stall, stop discussing it for a year. People don't talk about it anymore. Even Grace has stopped saying she hopes we can entertain the possibility of having the hybrid public input. She wins. Thank you.
Hi, my name is George, and I'm a Ward Two resident. I'm also here again to express my extreme concern about the 2023-2026 police contract. The fact that council members agreed to a lawyerless, one-day meeting and pre-approved the contract is highly concerning. You, our elected representatives, were put in power by us and should be focused on serving the community. That means holding a high standard for scrutiny in contract negotiations and not caving to police pressure. It means ensuring transparency and public participation. Voting to delay the contract decision over the past few months was a great example of listening to the public and doing what was right. And, you know, I thank you all for that. But it also wasn't enough. Endlessly delaying this isn't the same as voting against it. The contract on the table right now is abysmal. It doesn't make our community safer. All it does is reinforce a police power grab and stall accountability measures from being implemented. Why can't the CPRB call third-party investigations? Why can't officers be called to testify? And why on earth are there no provisions in the contract to terminate cops who falsify evidence, fail to report misconduct, or violate departmental standards for reckless and excessive unjustified force? Common sense provisions like these are an absolute necessity in any police contract and are critical to ensuring community safety. Not only that, but this whole bargaining process, having the police chief negotiate on behalf of the city across the table from his own union, it's completely undemocratic and needs to be drastically reformed. I urge all of you to vote no on this contract, whether that's because you're concerned about the lack of accountability, or just because you care about the democratic process and want to set a precedent of valuing public input over backroom deals. Voting no isn't going to be easy. The police will lie to you, try to intimidate you again, threaten arbitration. But if they do, they'll be proving your vote correct. The community will have your back if you show some spine. You've seen many of us turn out against this contract again and again over the past few months. And that's proof that community members are going to stay engaged on this issue. Voting no is going to take courage. All of us here who have been to a protest know it's not easy to stand up to the police, yet thousands of Urbana residents have and will continue to do so until the department finally comes under strict civilian control. Voting no will prove to your constituents that you trust us enough to include us in the process. It'll prove that you trust us to stand with you when push comes to shove. But if you don't trust your constituents, and if you end up pushing through this hasty contract, especially when Alderman Evans is in the hospital, if you vote yes, then don't expect us to trust you on public safety again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Schroeder. I'm a community organizer and a student here. I'm speaking today to urge the city council members to vote against the Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 through 2026. It is clear, even from a cursory examination, that this contract is in need of rebargaining. As others have and will continue to point out, this contract fails to address critical issues relating to de-escalation, witness coercion, and excessive force. The underhanded negotiations of this contract fly directly in the face of the democratic process and transparency. In exchange, the FOP has diverted their attention not towards the public safety and civic liability, in which the Urbana Police Department is charged, but towards the financial interest of its officers. In a city where the average person must struggle to get by, it is appalling to believe that anybody would allow this flawed contract to pass. The priority of the city council, the Urbana Police Department, and the mayor should be listening to the voices of the people and fighting this contract. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Andrew Johnson, and I want to address a issue. This is a big issue. So Brayden and Sheila Dow keep sending me these classes. This one is for March 14. And this is the application for the workshop. It says, please note, attendance at one application, assistant workshop, is required in order to be considered for funding through the grant opportunity, order to be considered for funding for the grant opportunity. So, okay, that's fine. How about I have three hours each time. I'm getting ready to read it to you. Okay? 4/14/22. These are dates of all the grant classes. Even we did them on Zoom. We did them in person. We did them at the libraries. We went around the city. Anywhere they say be at the meetings for the grants, to consider yourself to be able to be eligible for the grants. Right? This is since the COVID-19, okay, broke out. 10/4/22, 10/4/22, 10/26/21. And I even had meetings with Don Elmore, which I didn't know you all was connected, Sheila Mann, Sheila Dodds, Beverly Baker. Yeah, we just had an event. We had a big grant class for hours. Brayden Burden, Angela, and Beverly Baker. We just had this in April. It don't make sense to me. All these dates, October to 26, 21. If I didn't make it, Karen made it. Someone from our team made these classes. We have three hours. Even Dr. Monica gave classes here in Champaign-Urbana from Danville. We attended that. I gave the class at my youth center and invited other people from other youth groups so that we can all be prepared to learn how to write grants, prepare grants. Now, this last grant, our grant, we just filled out. Believe it or not, Brendan helped us. We had a meeting upstairs on the second floor, and he promised at me, and he kept his word. And he said, this is what you'll be what? What y'all read? Consider. This will put you more in a place where you should be able to receive grants. I'm not here to boast, brag, or bolster, or argue with you guys. We are all supposed to be partners. We are all supposed to be community partners. But for some odd reason, someone is going around lying on us, saying we don't know nothing. We don't know what we're doing. We've been in business too long for that. We're just as professional as you guys are. What I do for my community, we don't tell. We just do it. Because that's just the right thing to do. I don't understand. Okay? 10/6/21 on Zoom. All that time we spent going to these classes, and you have the destiny to turn me down again for our Angel Youth Center. You turned this down one more time, and you just thought you had it all together. But each number and point that y'all gave me, we went back and looked at it. Those are the wrong numbers. I presented my three director board. They presented it well. I was thinking something was really wrong. We went back and checked it. There's nothing wrong. Just, only thing was wrong was you guys switched up on us. The ones who were sitting here for the grant and listening to our presentation, JD and Will shouldn't have never been the only ones deciding nothing. You guys didn't even look at it, because if you would have looked at the things we turned in, it says it by itself. We couldn't have got those numbers. We had everything you asked for. But being that Champaign-Urbana and Champaign County worked together, and y'all the same people, which we didn't know that. Now we're learning. Oh, they're friends. They're buddies. Hey, don't give her the grant. You give it to her, we have to give it to her. Let them suffer. They're all black company. But the blacks here sitting don't know what y'all say behind our back. We have white friends too, and they love us. And they want to
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hello, thank you. My name is Julie Watkins. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I'm speaking like most of the people here, that I do not believe the FOP contract should go through. When I was working as an ASME union member, our contract had disciplinary stuff in it. I mean, it's only common sense. We are not being unreasonable to ask for that. We are not being unreasonable to expect something where police can have so much effect on people's future lives, that the public should have impact, should have some part of the bargaining process. It is the police chief making the bargaining on behalf of the city. That isn't two different sides. It's one side and another part of the same side. That is not a reasonable thing for negotiating. And some of the things that people have been brought up is it the way the contract, they say, and they gave the example of another FOP contract in Champaign, that they couldn't fire somebody who needed to be fired. And you're just opening yourself up. And people, I haven't heard public come here to defend this unreasonable contract. I haven't heard anybody in the police defend why they feel they should be exempt from reasonable things. And it just seems that when the one, the person who couldn't be fired didn't manage to remain not fired, that got back on. There had to be people cooperating with that. And it had mostly probably to do with the FOP. And so then they are telling the rest of us who are supposed to trust them that that's their priority. You've got time. Chris should be here. Don't go back to negotiate. This, the process that has everybody, I mean, we were supposed to get a presentation to explain the process. And I guess we got an explanation because there was a short presentation that wasn't discussed, that talked about what city people did. It didn't address what everybody, what people have been coming here to give public input about. It didn't address it. We are not asking for something unreasonable. And I wish you could react to that. I certainly wish that you postpone this vote until Chris is here. Thank you very much.
It looks like there is no further public input from the audience. Sure, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jane McClintock. I just wanted to speak on the same issue and just read a small excerpt from the letter from the ACLU, the Champaign County ACLU and NWAACP, who did a, undertook a legal review of the contract. I'm sorry. Okay. ACLU Illinois Legal Team has studied the proposed Urbana Fraternal Order of Police Contract. We wrote on behalf of the, they wrote to the city of Urbana to share concern about how the contract negotiated, conflicted with the department's use of force policy, which they, which I was really happy to see, and I want to say I really deeply appreciate, the police department working with NWAACP and ACLU on that use of force policy. I think it made some really important changes and just seemed like really good movement forwards. And also, they wrote to say that they were worried that it conflicted with the 10 shared principles, which I think also felt like a really good step forward and built a lot of community trust. But now this contract, which really, especially the side letter, that is undermining the civilian review board, it really, you know, feels like it puts a big hole in what was, what we built together. The side letter, this is now I'm back to ACLU letter. The side letter about the civilian review board is of particular concern. The mayor and sheriff, oh, I think that ACLU, the mayor and the sheriff met to talk about it, but there wasn't any follow-up. The contract that you're voting on today didn't bring in any of those concerns. So again, I'd like to second what other folks have said, or not second, many, that I think it would be great if we could put this off yet again. There's no real rush. We have until, what is it, June or something? Certainly until Chris is able to weigh in, who I know he cares a lot about this issue, and until we're able to, you know, maybe meet again with ACLU and NWAACP really address those concerns. So thank you for your consideration, and thanks for letting me slip in at the end. Appreciate it.
Elders Melinda Carr, Ward Three. I just, first of all, I wanted to say regarding Pastor Johnson and speaking, last week my pastor spoke and supporting her being so very courageous and coming forward and all the things that she's been through in this city. And I can attest to some things. I'm not going to speak tonight on them, but I just wanted to say I have to support her coming forward and being very courageous. And I want to, just having a moment of silence for Tyree Nichols. The nation saw, didn't have to go through all the things we're going through, but that should have spoken to what we've gone through tonight. I'm going to just pause for a minute. So I'm going to just pause for a minute. Then I want to say thanks to those who came tonight to speak. Some are afraid to come forward and speak of things that may have happened to them or things that they may be targeted for. So I just want to say thank you for those of you trying to stand. And we want to try to use language that, you know, people get frustrated and upset, but just know the heart of the people is to try to see that people are treated fairly and equitably in our city. Just thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
I've got a couple of emails.
Yes, I know, I'm going to get to them.
Okay. Go ahead. You might get to the ones that I've got to.
So there were many emails of the same verbiage, so I'm going to read who they're from and then I'll read the email once. Leslie Owens, Ken Wilson, Sarah Blanco, Justin Mansfield, Luke Lee, Matt, Emma Thicey and Sarah Lynn. I have the same email. Dear Urbana City Council members, please read my comment out loud during the council meeting. I have, I have made public comment on this issue before, but I must restate my concerns about the proposed Fraternal Order of Police contract for 23 to 26. It is unacceptable to give UPD nearly $1 million in raises and particularly after the city has already allocated 1.34 million to police and bonuses. More importantly, this contract also fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation and civilian oversight. It was negotiated without public input and fails to meet the needs of our community. Council must vote no on this contract and pressure UPD to return to the bargaining table to remove the restrictions on the civilian police review board and add the basic disciplinary measures necessary to hold police accountable for misconduct. If the council fails to vote no at today's meeting, I ask that you immediately to change the future bargaining process with the police to ensure involvement of both the public and the civilian review board directly in the next bargaining cycle. And then I have one from Alvaro Pizarro. Please read my comment out loud during the council meeting. I urge you and all council members to vote against the hastily negotiated Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 to 2026. This contract fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation and civilian oversight. The deceptive negotiation tactics used by the FOP to push this through six months early should make it clear that this contract doesn't put public safety first. This contract puts the interests of the FOP ahead of public safety and shows blatant disregard for the democratic process. Given the ongoing issues with law enforcement locally and nationally, it is unacceptable to have a contract negotiated without transparency that does not address the safety issues that unchecked police force can present to our community. As a current concerned member of the Urbana community, I ask that you vote no on Resolution Outside of that, does any member of council have an email to read? Grace.
Thanks. I have one from Sarah Nixon. That's hello, City Council, my name is Sarah Nixon and I'm writing in regard to Resolution Number 2022-12-091R. I have changed since then. I ask you to reaffirm your collective commitment to effective and meaningful transparency and accountability in policing and to save communities in Urbana by voting no on this FOP contract, which is being pushed behind the scenes with essentially no room for public engagement nor city council contribution. You've heard overwhelmingly from the public over the past two months, in addition to being urged by Urbana's own civilian police review board, that effective accountability procedures and meaningful civilian police conduct oversight must be mandated. Good officers need your support, but there are others, too many, who are violating policy and public safety with full impunity, thanks to the cloak provided by the Fraternal Order of Police. City Council, it's time to take a stand and say yes to protecting the public and not to protecting officers who break the law. And that means no on this vote. Thank you. That was the only one I had.
I have one here. Go ahead, Jaya.
Yeah, from David Cisneros. Says, hello, I'm an Urbana resident from Ward Four. I would like to join those speaking in opposition to the Urbana FOP contract vote. As others have noted, there are still many problems with this contract that have not been addressed, including issues of police civilian review, de-escalation policies and more. Furthermore, as others have said, there is still time under the current contract and statutory routes to continue negotiations and reform. There's no need to approve the contract at this point when there is more time to make it better and more ability to negotiate with UPD on reforms. The majority of the city council members successfully campaigned on greater oversight and accountability for the Urbana police. Those promises have not yet come to, sorry, not come to fruition yet, but this contract vote is a chance to begin to do so. Thank you, David Cisneros.
Sharice.
Yeah, I have one, I think it's Leslie Owens. It's a, yeah, it's a different letter. I have made public comment on this issue before. Is this what yours is too? And I must restate my concerns about the proposed fraternal, okay, order, proposed fraternal order of police contract for 2023 through 2026. It's unacceptable to give UPD nearly a million dollars in raises, particularly after the city has already allocated 1.34 million to the police and bonuses. More importantly, this contract also fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation and civilian oversight. It was negotiated without public input and fails to meet the needs of our community. And now I'm realizing that this has been read. Council must vote on, must vote no on this contract and pressure UPD to return to the bargaining table to remove restrictions on civil police review board and add the basic disciplinary measures necessary to hold police accountable for misconduct. If the council fails to vote no, at today's meeting, I ask that you act immediately to change the future bargaining process with the police to ensure the involvement of both public and civilian police review board directly in the next bargaining cycle. Thank you for your time, Leslie Owens.
Is that everything? Okay. Okay, public input is now over. We'll move on to staff report. Next item is closed session. Really just a collective bargaining pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C2. entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Yes. I will move that we go into closed session. For collective bargaining pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C2.
Well, second.
It was moved by Sharice and seconded by James. Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Council Committee of the House will now go into closed session and we will return to finish the remainder of the agenda. Okay, it looks like we are all back and ready. Mary Allison, Jaya, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'll entertain a motion to come back into session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ja, it's been moved by James and seconded by Grace that we return to open session. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item of business, unfinished business, Resolution Number 2022-12-091R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 70, term of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2026.
All right, so I'm going to start this off with just a little bit of background here about the process. So it's always been our, our practice here at the City of Urbana to meet with the council in closed session to discuss upcoming negotiations for any contract and then often several times during the process. During those meetings, we always discuss potential items that might be addressed in negotiations, possible proposals, the city's target range as it relates to wage increases and other economic items. Similar to other union negotiations, the city met with council in closed session to discuss the parameters prior to the start of negotiations with FOP. In terms of the FOP agreement that we're discussing tonight, we met with council in closed session on September 6 and September 26, 2022, to discuss the strategy for a total of several hours. And at that time, we see, received direction and authority from the city council regarding our negotiations. After that second closed session on September 26, the city's team met with the union on November 4th and we negotiated a contract with the FOP that was consistent with the direction and authority we had received from the city council. And so the contract that you have before you now is consistent with that authority that we were given by the council. We also met in closed session again on December 19 and January 17 as well. So with that, I'm going to ask Michelle to talk about the specifics.
I believe you all have in front of you and has been up on the website, a memo drafted on December 15 of 2022, which summarizes generally this contract and its terms. And that was also up on the website, along with a red line and a clean version of the contract. So hopefully everyone's had ample time to go ahead and review those. And it does summarize, but I'll just briefly go back over that, what the changes to the contract were was specifically in section 2.2, which was the discrimination prohibition section. We amplified that to make it a much more robust nondiscrimination provision that mirrors the city's provision and it also mirrors what we had put into the ASME contract when we negotiated that last. Section 10.2 is the gender neutrality clause. We amplified that to include gender identity and expression. And along those lines, we went back through the contract and inconsistent with the resolution passed by the city a while ago, we replaced all pronouns to gender neutral pronouns. The term of the contract was something that was negotiated. It's a standard three-year term of contract. We added one holiday that would be effective in 2024 to the already existing list of holidays, which is Juneteenth. And then we addressed wages and that was the increases effective July 1 of 2023 of 3.25%. A 3.25% on July 1 of 2024 and a 3.6% increase on July 1 of 2025. Oh, and the memo does also note the fiscal impact of the contract, which I believe was calculated at approximately $990,700. But I'll ask Elizabeth to speak to any more specifics about that.
I don't know that I have any more specifics. That was, that was the cost over the life of the contract, so including compounding that occurs during the contract term.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? There are no questions, then the next thing would be a motion.
So I would like to make a motion for Resolution Number 2022-12-091R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 70, term of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, to be moved to council for approval.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by.
If I could speak to the motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, we did, we did hear the commentary over the past several, several months. This contract was arrived at based on parameters that were set by council and negotiated in a, in a manner that was known to council and agreed to by council for the, and came back in the parameters that were set. It is time for us to move this on to the full city council for a vote. I will say that I feel strongly that our colleague, Chris Evans, should be here for the final vote. So I would be the first one that if we get to next Monday, which is when this would appear on the city council agenda, and if Chris is unable to attend at that time, I would be the first person to move that we defer it to the following council meeting, which would be two weeks after that. And so that he can be present and have his voice and his opinion heard about this, this contract. I, I have frankly spent a lot of time in closed session talking about this with my fellow council members and with staff. One of the things that I've heard a lot about are the, the way this, this contract could have been done differently. It's very important for us as the city to preserve management rights, which means the ability to have policies and procedures and to take action, including firing employees for violating them. We have a very robust policy and procedures, including use of force policy, that we can fire police officers if they violate it currently. The problem with enumerating specific things on a list of what can be done is we are, we would be giving up some management rights with that because that creates a list that limits what we can create policy about. Unfortunately, even having that list, the arbitration model that protected a certain police officer from Champaign who deserved to be fired to get reinstated, that process would still go forward. They would still be able to attempt arbitration, even if we listed specific items that we said we could not fire them. And they would have the, the same opportunity to see that frankly injustice carried out through that process. And so we, we have a contract in front of us that, that met the bounds that the council set for looking at this in advance of the contract being expiring in June. It met, it met our goals. I think it should have a vote. I don't know what that vote will be at full council. I, I think it needs to have a vote. If, if it passes, then we will go forward with it. If, if it passes, then we will go forward with it, and then we will work on, uh, what we need to do about the CPRB, uh, in conjunction with conversations with the FOP about how we need to change things, because we need to change both our ordinance and the side letter and the contract. Uh, those are all things that we can address in the future. Uh, it's on the council's mind. It, the council's very interested in making those changes. We need more information. That's why we've, um, hired someone to help us look at our current public safety model and give us more ideas about how to do that. And so, that is why I am urging us to go ahead and bring it to council next week for an up and down vote, uh, assuming our colleague, Chris Evans, can join us for that meeting. Thank you.
Well, as I was saying, it was moved by James and seconded by Sharice, um, to move on to the city council for approval. Um, and now is an opportunity for discussion. Sharice?
I just kind of want to piggyback on what James was saying about, um, it, I know it's confusing for our public, and it's not that we don't hear our public, but we, we also, um, basically, this was negotiated with our knowledge. We know what we knew and, and with parameters that we set forward for this particular contract. To not follow through and to not do what we said we would, how we would respond, um, that is, would be called negotiating in bad faith. And we, we pretty much got what we wanted. And I think that, um, we need to move this forward, and I'm hoping that, um, uh, our public, uh, safety review can add a new set of eyes to discuss and help us discuss what the CPRB side letter is. I hear what everybody's saying about that. I get it. But we obviously need a new set of eyes, and we have to also think about the fact that things evolved when this, when this was, uh, originally written, when ordinance was originally written. Um, it, no one could, could have thought that some of the things that have happened in other parts of the country, not here in Urbana, but in other parts of the country. And I see that, I know some people want to, they're just thinking prophylactically and, and, you know, this, how things could happen here. But what I hear complaints that are always about someone else's or some other municipality's police department, it, it bothers me. And it bothers me because when I see Urbana police in action, a lot of times, they're helping people. They're not overpolicing the black community. We have so few police now that they can't overpolice the black community. They, it, it's just not even possible. And I take, I really do take, um, some offense when I hear, uh, that, those types of accusations, because that is not what I experience in my community, and it's not what I observe. And I want good people to be on our police force, and I want good people to show up when we have problems too. And I'm, I'm just going to say, it, it offends me when what I would consider allies get up and propose and presume to speak for my community. And that's all I'm going to say.
Grace?
Thank you. Um, I also agree with the willingness to defer this item to keep in council until Chris and, um, the full council can be here for the final vote. Um, and I just want to say that I appreciate the input and engagement from the public. Uh, thanks for those who came tonight and those who have stayed with us or are still watching throughout this process. Um, I definitely hear the frustration and the desire for more transparency and accountability. I believe that the community has concerns about Urbana issues. I don't think that these are exclusively problems of somewhere else, and there's examples that people could probably point to from the community here. Um, there are a lot of obstacles and challenges throughout the whole system federally and on the state and local levels. There are a lot of, um, ways that the system is set that we don't have control over. I don't agree with the necessary way that we, um, are going about this contract and some of the limitations on CPRB, uh, which I've made known during the closed sessions, and I appreciate that staff, um, has acknowledged that input, and it wasn't in the majority direction, so staff has gone with the, um, majority council input for their direction in negotiations. Um, so I will plan to vote no for this contract, um, out of consistency with some of the other concerns, um, and other things that I would have liked to have included. Um, I think that, um, many of these changes that are necessary and that I hear people wanting about increased transparency and accountability, a lot of them are outside of this FOP contract, um, as was already mentioned, and are actually part of city policies such as discipline, termination, hiring, use of force, are all city policies outside of the contract. And I plan to not give up on working towards those things and other avenues to make change towards more accountability, transparency, and community engagement through our policy and the whole systemic way things are set up that are outside of this contract. Um, I hope that we can commit to work towards this as a council, as executive leadership and staff. Um, last year, when we talked about these contracts, I feel like we said the same kinds of things, that we were going to reevaluate the CPRB ordinance, that we were going to do some of these things before the next contract, and now we're here, and I don't think that I've seen much progress on that. So, I will still hope and try and work towards making these needs and the progress that I think is necessary, and I hope that we can keep that in mind going forward to actually make some changes before the next contract comes around, if that's what we're looking for. Thanks.
Um, Jayah or Mary Alice, do you have any discussion points for the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. This is Jayah. Thank you. Um, I want to thank the public and everyone's engagement in this process. I know it's been confusing and, um, frustrating for folks, and I think the extra time we've taken, I hope, has provided opportunities for people to direct those comments and questions to city council and to staff. I know I've engaged with community members to help explain the process and some of the things that are challenging and unique to the FOP contract negotiation process that are, are different than, than other unions. That's not to say that anything was different in terms of how the process should and did go, but just the things that are unique related to arbitration, um, that make negotiating a contract, contract like this a little bit different and challenging in, in unique ways. I think also, just to reiterate what's already been stated, that the concerns that people are bringing up around things like use of force are not issues that are not important to this council. They absolutely are. Same thing with CPRB. But this is a contract for the folks who serve as police officers for the city of Urbana. It's not about changing legislation through this one tool. As we mentioned earlier today, we're doing a comprehensive review of all aspects of public safety in the city, and CPRB absolutely is part of that. As James stated earlier, we all recognize the, the limitations and the outdated nature of the way our, our CPRB currently functions and are dedicated, uh, to working on addressing those issues. And so, I just encourage the public to continue to ask questions if there are things that are still unclear in this process, and to know that the concerns that have been raised are heard and are, are planned to be and are already in the process of being, in some cases, addressed through legislative tools, um, because they fall outside of the parameters of the contract. That's it.
Mary Alice, did you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, I, I wanted to add to the conversation, um, beyond what other city council members have said, is that the, the CPRB, uh, it was made very clear to me that it's a very chicken or the egg here. When, when does the CPRB ordinance get changed? How do we change this? And through the use of force policy, um, process, it was, it was a very long process. It had a lot of different engagements that we heard from all different people around the community, and I think that we would be doing a disservice if we were changing the CPRB if we didn't have that kind of engagement process. Um, so I feel like from my conversations with, with different people on the police force, they are committed to working with city council and the public to make the ordinance work better for the community. Um, and so, for that reason, I'm happy that we have this public service review that will help us with that process, because it's not something that we should do very quickly. And I actually don't think it's a good idea to do it as a tool in this contract, because that would be a rushed thing. Um, we wouldn't have the opportunity to really flesh out some of the ideas, some of these ideas. So, I, I just wanted to add that little, um, part to this conversation tonight.
Thank you.
Chandra, could I, could I add too, that I also echo what was previously stated? In terms of final vote, it's important that the whole council is present.
Okay. So, add it. Sharice, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I'd just add to the, um, commentary. I, I understand the frustration particularly about the CPRB ordinance. Believe, believe me, there's no one more frustrated with the way that ordinance is written and, um, currently operating than I am. So, I'm looking forward to having a very thorough, um, evaluation and reform of both the ordinance and, and the, um, the, uh, aspects that if it's included in the contract again. We, the, the, the process that was followed to achieve this contract to get us to the point where we are tonight is, is, is appropriate, and I'm actually pretty pleased with how it went in terms of being very efficient. And the reason for that is we have a great, great deal of work ahead of us on this public safety review. That's where our staff time, that's where council time, that's where community time is going to be spent over the next 18 months. This is going to be a paradigm shift in the way we do, the way we look at and the way we carry out, um, uh, efforts on community safety going forward. It's an, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us here, and that's where our efforts need to be and need to be focused. And I know people say, well, you know, actions speak louder than words. Well, we have had some very powerful words coming out of this council, um, and city over the past three years, and some very fundamental, significant actions. I just want to put some things in context. First of all, we adopted the 10 shared principles. These are the guiding principles that are now incorporated into our use of force policy, and they are part of the, um, operating policies that guide the, um, behavior of the police department. In February of 2021, I believe it was February, there was a resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity in Urbana, an enormous challenge, and it's one we've undertaken. And another resolution that prioritized tactical de-escalation in the use of force policy and police transparency in Urbana. So, those three documents are the words. Those are the guiding principles that guide our policy and our actions. Right after those were passed, we began working on the use of force revision, and that's, and you're right, it was a nine-month process. Chief, former Chief Seraphin and I met multiple times with the Champaign County, um, N double ACP, and, um, representatives from both the state and local ACLU, representatives from the ministerial alliance and other community stakeholders to completely rewrite the use of force policy. I am really proud of that process and very proud of that policy. Um, that is now in force in Urbana. It prioritizes human life and de-escalation in contacts between the police and the community. Um, and that's, that's a significant achievement. Following that, we also piloted a co-responder, um, um, team for follow-up services for people experiencing a mental or behavioral health crisis in Urbana. We, um, the city council allocated an extra $35,000 for additional training in de-escalation. That training was carried out last year. Um, stakeholders were invited to attend a presentation by the trainer as well, so they understood, um, what, what was involved. We're also going to be under, police are going to be, um, trained in active bystandership in law enforcement or ABLE training. That's another, um, uh, program offered by Georgetown University. And if you look at some of the initiatives and actions that we've taken over the past three years, all of them, or most all of them, are a direct reflection of our commitment to inclusiveness, transparency, and equity. And so, this, again, our energy and our efforts are going to be on the public safety review, and we could spend, you know, we could spend one or two years wrangling over a contract, or we could spend the next 18 months changing the way we approach public safety service in this community, and I think our efforts will be much better served by the latter. And we have a good contract. We have an excellent police force who service well in this community. And people don't show up in council to tell us that, but I do get that feedback from many, many, many community members. They're just not here tonight, so I have to respect that as well. So, we're hearing everything, we're, you know, we understand what you're telling us. We take it to heart, and we'll follow through on our commitment.
Um, I, I'd like to say a few things. If Sharice, you could take the chair for me?
Yes, Chandra, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes Chandra Bishop.
So, yeah, this is, I've, I've heard all the input over the last several months. We've had a lot of discussion in closed session about the contract and what, what the parameters were that we, we gave the bargaining team. And it was, it was because of this upcoming public safety review, that is the only reason why I feel okay moving forward with this contract, as well as because, um, members of the police force have, you know, talked about their willingness to come back to the table and discuss some things, um, moving forward. This is not the end. You don't, we, the contract, when you're, when you're talking about a contract, it just outlines the employees and employer's rights and responsibilities and obligations of employment and that sort of thing. And, and the policy things that we want to change, as, you know, my fellow council members have said, does not happen within the, the contract of, of your rights to work. It's, it's in those policies given to you by your boss. And I did ask the question, is it difficult, you know, for, for all of, you know, these, the violations that were stipulated? Like, they're not listed in the, in the contract or, but those things are covered in the policies. And so, I, I mean, I- This is a long and arduous process, and we've tried to make things available to the public as best as we can and are allowed to. It, it is very frustrating. It, I didn't know how frustrating until I was on this side of the table. But just know that we are keeping what the public wants in mind, and it, what this council wants and what the public wants is essentially the same thing. We want, um, people who interact with the police to be safe. We want, you know, respect and mutual respect between the residents as well as police officers. That is the ultimate goal. Um, and we're doing things such as this community safety review, um, that will lead us to, um, promote community safety and well-being in ways that minimize harm, um, related to race and poverty and, and other things. So, I, I just want the public to understand that this is one piece of it, and that we are definitely, um, coming back to the CPRB. Um, you heard discussion about it tonight from the project manager. It is on our list to do. And I, I, I do plan on passing this because, or voting for this because, um, we are coming back around to the other things that we want to address as it relates to community and public safety.
You want the chair back, Chandra?
Sure.
Okeydoke.
Um, anything, any other further discussion? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Clerk?
Ms. Wu?
Yeah.
Ms. Hersi?
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
No.
Whizenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is council input and communications.
Thank you. Thank you, Chandra. I wanted to call the public's attention to recent action, and I have, in full disclosure, I have to mention that my wife is a teacher at Wiley School, and my son attended Wiley School. Recently, the Urbana School District has decided to close Wiley School at the end of May for asbestos abatement. It's an old building. It is a sick building. It needs some care. But one of the challenges is the Wiley School community was a very vibrant community, serving its students and its families and its staff in a very successful way, in a way that was actually drawing people to Urbana and to move into the Wiley School District to attend public school. That's an important thing to note because people who are choosing to do that in our school district is a treasure. It is, it's important. The challenge I'm asking the public to take on is the problem with closing the school as it was closed was there was no plan for what it's going to do next. They're going to abate the asbestos, and they do not know if they're going to bring it back as the vibrant community school that it has been, serving, it's the second highest percentage of African-American students. It's the second highest percentage for elementary schools, second highest percentage of students of color in the Urbana School District as an elementary school. It also, with King and Dr. Preston Williams School, are the highest with low economic status students. But it was succeeding, and it was drawing people to it, and it had a community. And so not having a plan for how that building's going to be used after the asbestos is abated means that that community is essentially being ended without a plan for how to serve them. They're going to be distributed amongst the district to the other schools, both students and staff. So what I'm asking the public to do is to talk to the school board and insist that they do some strategic planning and have an idea about what they're doing with their six elementary school buildings and the other challenges that the district faces. They need to have that action. They need to engage the public in that conversation, and the public is clearly staff and students and families, but it's also residents, because we all, as residents, are, that either through our property tax or through our rent, are contributing to having a school district, whether we have kids or not. We need that kind of strategic planning. We need to make decisions as a district, as a school district, with a bigger picture in mind, not moving from thing to thing in a reactive fashion. So please both bring your voices to the school district and be a part of having those conversations so we can help determine what we want our elementary schools to be and what we want our school district to be. Thanks.
Sharice.
I just want to say that Saturday, I had the pleasure to attend the Read Across America event at Lincoln Square, and I loved seeing the crowd that I saw. It was such a diverse crowd of people that, from this community, that I have, and I'm sure probably surrounding communities, that it just made my heart full. The other thing, though, is that I saw many of immigrant population, and this is the thing that, you know, James brought up about Wiley School. I want our citizens to be more grateful for our public schools, period, because as I look at news, as I read the news, as I see different people that come into the community of Urbana, the one thing I know is that there are peoples throughout the world where girls aren't allowed to learn how to read. Children are put to work. They don't get to be children. And when I saw, and that's what made my heart so full on Saturday, to see how many parents brought their children to participate in that particular event, how many children walked away with free books in the little bags that said, "Reading is my superpower." And I really want us as a community to be more mindful and more grateful for the teachers, for the administrators, for our leaders that we have in our community that push education, and how important it is for us to be more of a, how much more that just helps our community when we have that type of diversity within our community. So I just want to say I had a great time. I thought that there were, it was, there were so many booths and vendors there and different educator, educational booths, and it was just a wonderful event, and I hope to continue to be involved with that.
Mary Alice or Jaya? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. With no further business before council, we are adjourned.